In Paul City Hall in the Monday, July 26th, 2021 meeting of the South St. Paul School Board. Lisa, would you please take the role?
Inspector Lalaberty?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Diaz?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Aaron?
Here.
Chair Walker?
Here.
At seven present.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, once again, thank you for attending or for watching on television at home. We appreciate your interest. We'll start the meeting off with the approval of the agenda for tonight and the minutes from the previous meetings. That's the school board meeting agenda for tonight, July 26th, 2021. The committee of the whole meeting minutes on the school board meeting minutes from June 28th, 2021. Do I have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. And a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes and the agenda and minutes are approved. We'll start off our reports tonight with a report from Dr. Chad Schmidt regarding an update and highlights on the 2021 Summer Learning Program. Welcome, Chad. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Excellent. Good evening, Chair Walker, Board members, Superintendent Webb, and South St. Paul community. It is my pleasure to be here tonight with Robin O'Reilly, who's going to join me up here at the podium. And we're in the middle of summer, July 26th, and summer programs have been at it for about six weeks or so now. So it's a chance for us to give us an, give you an update on the programs that are running across the district, all ages, and to highlight some of the fun that's happening in each of those programs. So Robin is our Alternative Programs Lead, so she has been pivotal in getting all of these programs coordinated and on the ground and moving. And so she and I are going to tag team through this presentation, but a lot of it, you'll get to hear from Robin. So I'll let Robin get started and I'll move the slide forward for us. Hold on. Oops. We got the other slide deck up. As we're dropping this slide, just, we've had a great start to summer programming. And we're just so pleased that Chad and Robin are here to give us an overview. But we're seeing just incredible numbers of students. I think everyone's tired of being home during the pandemic. So not just students, probably the parents and their students. So we're seeing strong numbers and some great programming and a lot of the new features as well.
Yes. In my neighborhood, I see the parents and the kids walking to the school every day and they all have smiles on their faces. I think there's a lot of truth to what you just said.
There it is.
It's good for everyone.
Excellent. All right. We're back at it. Lisa, with her tech support skills, we're all at it. Earlier this evening in the Cal meeting, you'd mentioned some of the highlights about social media. So if you've been following our Facebook account and our Twitter account and our Instagram account, you've seen highlights of the summer program. So some of these pictures might look a little familiar to you. I will turn it over to Robin to start to share a little background information and then we'll dig into the programs.
Well, thanks again for all of your support in launching some of these programs. We really did have to look at things differently and we really had to tackle things early this year. So starting in January, we all started getting together and this truly is programming that impacts every department across the district and every building across the district. So we had to tie in administrators, input from teachers, input from parents, and input from kids and what would be interesting for them, and also realizing what their needs were to build programming to fit what we were looking for. So when we take a look at it, it not only is the people in those, in those buildings and those spaces, but from the district level, we had to tie in tech, we had to tie in food service, transportation. So this is a big beast that was a heavy lift and we had so many people that were able to jump in and we, we worked together to make sure that it got off the ground and we had kids coming in. We had one day off from the time that kids left, that last day of school. We had that Monday and then we had students in that secondary building for sixth through eighth grade and ninth through 12th grade programming, starting on that Tuesday. So we've been at it strong since then. So we went forward and talked about that it not only hits every building and program, but it also, we have early childhood and early learning and we have community add at our Lincoln spaces. And then we have ESY, which is Extended School Year. That is in all of the different sites, Lincoln Center and secondary. So we also have an early learning classroom for that as well.
So we're going to take a few minutes to highlight each of these programs. And you'll get an overview slide and then a highlight slide. So we're going to start with the Early Learning Program, which is overseen by Connie Garland Squire, our Director of Equity and Early Learning. And they had two main, they have two main summer programs. The first one being Summer Blast, which is targeting students who maybe haven't had a formal school experience yet, who are heading into four-year-old preschool or into kindergarten. And the goal is focused around social emotional learning and development, which is what kids at ages four and five are play-based. And then some work on early reading and some math and some STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math opportunities that are all about engaging children in learning and developing relationships, making friendships. The second program that Early Learning leads is a drop-in play through the Early Childhood Family Education Program. That's really targeting families who have young children, so basically birth through age five. And it's about, again, developing relationships between and among families and between and among children and to support their learning together in mixed ages and play groups. So a couple of highlights, you can see these lovely pictures, the Early Learning Summer Blast. So I'm not going to click on that link to the classroom website, but what you'll see there is a teacher who's got pictures of what's happening during class. So to keep the family connected to some of the fun learning activities that are going on and some of the highlights that students have during the school day. And then they had this excellent community baby shower where all families with newborns or even expecting kiddos were welcome. And when they came in, they were provided with some information about our early learning programs, supplies, advice, and resources. And so it was a great and exciting day in the Early Learning Center for this community baby shower. And so now we're going to look at our Elementary Summer Learning Academy and Robin's going to take it there.
So we have Deanne Ellison and Dan Riley are the Assistant Principals from both Capoja Elementary Center and also Lincoln Center. They were instrumental in creating programming for both of them and they were housed out of one space this year at Lincoln Center. So what we did was really focused on inviting the students back in and really, really targeting them, putting programming together for that first chunk before the July 4th break, just getting them in the routine. And what we started this year is a curriculum called Engineering is Elementary. So that is what you will see going forward. It's a really exciting hands-on curriculum. So that's something that we can really get students involved in and they can look forward to every summer because it will be different for every grade level. So it will tie in different concepts and they can have different experiences for each of those. So we were really excited to get on board with that and then have the training. And so what you'll see here is we have some of the highlights of the students at each grade level where they are hands-on, immersed in their learning and they're, they're with their peers and they're having fun. And so I think that has been great feedback that we've gotten from the parents that said our kids are doing school and they're having fun and they're back. So it was really exciting to see some of these students that haven't been consistently at school. This was some of their first time in the building because they didn't come back right away as they were distance learners. So this was their first experience back. So it's been a really positive experience overall for the Summer Learning Academy kids. Our middle school program, that is, that looked a little bit different. So we do have Packer Preview again, but instead of having it in July, we did it in June this year. So that was a big switch. And the reasoning for doing that is by inviting them in June, we were having a lot of parents reach out and say the anxiety about coming into middle school was, was just built up and they didn't want to wait till July. So we thought, why not? Let's try it in June. And then those students would be able to be part of our July programming and August programming if it continued. So we've had a great number of students that, that not only attended Packer Preview as incoming sixth graders, but then stayed on and enrolled for July programming as well. So we had session one and session two set up for our middle school students. And so that, that targets, that first part was a lot of that academic and skills-based. And then doing that school and it's, it's really high interest learning that they were doing. And then in July, there was a mixture of different classes. So we ended up having a class about fishing where they learned about the different water levels and the types of fish that were there and they, they did hands-on, they went fishing, they learned about watersheds. We had computer applications, hands-on STEM classes, mythical creatures, introduction to theater. So what we were doing was taking academic concepts and putting it in the high interest hands-on. And these students had that ability to do that. So we really tied in a lot of students and once again, it really got them comfortable and it's great seeing them excited, walking the hallways and talking about this next school year, excited for it.
Can I just say in my, this is my 12th year and I've never seen as many middle school kids coming through the door in summer programming. So when they said 180 middle school kids coming in, not because they have to, because they want to for the cool programming, says a lot about what you're doing. Earlier, John, you talked about word of mouth being a highlight of it, right? Students being able to share with other students about how fun this is, about how exciting this is, about how they get to explore is, is one of the greatest advertisements we could have. So we can do all we need to on social media, but getting them to share the story about how summer learning is beneficial and helpful is, is something that will help it take off.
So our 10th through 12th grade students, it is focused on credit recovery for graduation. And so what we ended up doing was changing a few things on the calendar to give students more of an opportunity. Just with the, with the pandemic, we had more students that, that had some gaps in their learning and had to do some credit recovery. So we built a schedule where they really did, we met them where they were, they were able to pre-test on concepts and get through the coursework that they needed to do. So it was standards-based and once, as soon as they showed proficiency, we were able to give them their credit and enroll them in their next course. So it was very exciting. At this point in time, we have a ton of students that are winding up this week that are going to be completing those credits. So trying to reset students so they're back on grade level is, has been pretty exciting for us there. As of July 22nd, that's one thing I will read from the slide, we had 182 students that had earned at least one credit at that point in time. So that is, that's huge for, for the lives of those kids in not having to do that after school or after their graduation date. So that's been a huge success. And it's been great to have the students in the building and connecting with the teachers when they have, we have time built in for flexibility if they need extra help or if they need to do some distance pieces with that.
And so the last program we'll highlight tonight is the Extended School Year Programming of the Special Services. It is coordinated by Teresa Starkman, our Assistant Director of Special Services and Learning. And this is a program for specialized instruction or related services that are part of a child's individualized education program, their IEP. So we have one section of early childhood kiddos who come in on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. And then we have a couple of sections at both elementary and secondary that run Monday through Thursday mornings. Elementary out of Lincoln Center, secondary out of the secondary building. And each of the services are individualized to help the child maintain skills that they grew during the school year and to ensure that they continue to grow and not lose progress in those skill areas. And Teresa wanted to highlight, one of the real strengths is that this is entirely staffed by South St. Paul teachers and special educators and paraprofessionals running all of the ESY programs. So it's just a tremendous commitment and dedication to their students and success. And the highlight that Teresa wanted to share is this lemonade stand that our secondary ESY kiddos put on a couple of weeks ago. Of course, it's been so hot all summer that this is a, this is great. And so anybody who got to participate, had a chance to see and be around these students who had a chance to practice coin counting and using a calculator and working with, with guests. So greeting them and serving them and all of that is application of the learning they've been doing in their classroom. So you see the smiles on their faces and, and it was another one of our warm summer days. So the lemonade was a, was a hit. And so as we get ready to wrap up, we also want to highlight some of the things that are to come with our summer programs before we take any questions that you might have.
So upcoming still this summer, we have two transition opportunities available for our youngest learners that are coming into a formalized elementary building. We have K Camp for incoming kindergarteners and that's going to be at their specific site, either Capoja or Lincoln. And that's going to be running, coming up soon, and Packer Prep. This is a program that we've talked about and we've needed for quite some time. But this is for incoming ninth graders to get them used to what the high school versus middle school differences are and to go over credits and course planning and, and get them in the right direction and connected to staff so they can start the school year off to the right start as well.
And so if there are any families who are interested in this but haven't signed up yet, that is still available. And so we would encourage you to contact your school and, and speak with the office, who can get you to the right registration site to be in the program.
In the school year, we are still going to be lifting a couple of different programs up at the middle school. So we'll have different programs running based on what the needs are. And then we'll have different sessions working with the elementary students as well. So look for those. And then we're already starting to plan for summer of 2022. So hopefully, once we have some stuff, we'll do some save the dates for some families so they can plan. If families are anything like ours, that calendar's key and we want to make sure that we can get ahead of it and give families all the opportunities that they can.
So with that, we want to thank you for the time and this opportunity for us to share some of the highlights and great things that are going on in summer programming and to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. That, it just looks so fun. Every summer, it just, since the old, have the teachers teach to their passions, it's just caught on and it's really changed the whole thought process of what summer school is. It's really fun to see.
I think this is a huge marketing piece. We can, how do we get this out? You know, what you just showed us, how do we get that out to families and kids? And it's like one more feather in the hat, you know, to keep on working on raising our enrollment.
Even the incoming sixth grader piece, as, as my son was, was enrolling in it, you know, he knows everybody in Eagan and Cottage Grove and they were like, what? What do you do and how long is it? And, and you know, grandmothers would look at mothers and say, what, why aren't you advocating for this? You know, why, can we take them to South St. Paul? Can we, you know, I mean, they were just shocked.
Yes, you can.
They were shocked. So yes, it was a huge deal. I agree with the marketing piece, yeah.
I think it's a really great marketing piece.
Right. So we've tried to tap into social media. We've tried to build our website and make sure we've got resources available on website. And then each of the schools and school leaders communicate out through their networks, their newsletters and, and that. But if there are families who haven't heard about it, there's still more work to do.
Yeah. Awesome.
I am really excited too with, with knowing, I feel more organized for next summer than we have in the last few just because of where, we didn't know where we were going with, what could we do, what could we not do? So knowing that there's already pieces laid out ahead of time, that early word of mouth, that early planning is so huge, especially for these programs, that we can invite students multiple ways and, and show them and get families in.
Yeah.
Is there additional state funding or any state funding to pay for all these programs? Like how are we paying for all of these programs?
So this lady here at my right knows the details more. So in a sidebar conversation, I'm sure she could go very deep with you, Monica, but a quick overview of some of the funding that goes with it?
Quick overview of, we have about 23 programs running right now and the majority of them are ran through a state-approved alternative program, which is funneled through a certain set of funds. So we will get funding based, they should be self-sufficient programs. So if we have the enrollment, it pays for themselves and we have additional state funding based on, depending on what activities we have, it could qualify for different areas of that state funding. So we, we really were able to lay things out this year and really be financially responsible and figure out how we can get what the students need tied to the right funding source. And then we have to make sure that our next step is reporting it like properly so we can make sure that we backfill that. And so we are, we were able to get that support and going forward, they have committed to that for next summer as well to fund that same way. So where I feel like we can already plan and put things in place for next summer, that is not something that we've been able to do because usually it's, we always are waiting to see where the money goes and we have that commitment right now. And so definitely there, we can sit down and talk funding into great detail. But this is, it was awesome that not only is it self-funding, but that we were able to have some different, different things to, like that curriculum piece. Now we have something that is organized that the students need and they can look forward to next summer and we can keep feeding into that and keep students coming back.
That's why I'm like, how are we paying for all of this? So that's why it looks incredible.
So the July session, that is six through, is it six through nine, six through eight, where it's classes, social justice, the fishing, all of that, could that be open enrollment?
Yes, and we were kind of navigating some of that water right now on how to, what's the, what's the easiest way to streamline getting those open enrollment students to do that? So answer yes, we have to figure out, we did it a clunky way this year. We have to get a more efficient way if we want to market it to make it widespread. But we do have a couple out of district students that are taking advantage of that.
Okay.
So we also have some out-of-district teachers. A number of our teachers this summer just said, hey, I'm just exhausted teaching a year through the pandemic. I really want to help long-term, but I can't teach this summer. So as we were touring some of the schools, they said, this teacher is on loan from South Washington County and this one's on loan from St. Paul or Eagan, so.
Isn't there one from Iowa?
Could be.
The one who teaches the social justice class, I think, is from Iowa.
Oh, great.
Okay.
So we were able to give some of our teachers breaks that needed it and have some wonderful student enrollment.
And I know just even talking about it, coming here, we were talking about the different classes that were offered and kids in our family are like, well, why couldn't we go there? So I mean, we have staff student, our staff's kids that are asking about it as well. So that was how we had to navigate and we used one as, how does this work with enrollment? And so we were able to try to navigate that because we knew the parents.
I have an incoming sixth grader who is taking the social justice course. And you know, I suppose when, when looking at that and the other options like fishing and theater and sports, some of his buddies were like, no, why would you take that? And as he's been talking about it, they're like, is it going to be offered again next summer? So just so you know, they want it again next summer.
That's great. That's great.
It is great. Spur, spur interest, spur passion and allow them to pursue what's, what's in front of them and what they want to, what they want to do right now. So it builds on our philosophy of IB around inquiry and it builds around our mission statement of inquire a passion in every learner to continuously improve and positively change the world.
And when you think about those kids coming from elementary now taking these classes, it's a different way of thinking, it's a different way of presentation. And he's come often home and said like, I, I feel like I'm a big kid already, mom. They're, they're challenging me, they're, they're making me think. And so developing these skills before he's even getting into, into sixth grade fully. So he feels so prepared, so prepared.
That's great.
That's fantastic. Love hearing that.
Yes.
So thanks again for having us. Thanks for Robin for helping make all this happen.
Great report. Nice report.
Very good. Thanks, my friend, Robin and Chad. Truly is exciting stuff. Those are fun reports. Next on the reports agenda is the highlights of the public listening session submissions. Again, there's many ways you can get ahold of the board if you want to talk with us or tell us something. There's a way to go through the school website. Also, our phone numbers, our, and email addresses are listed out on the website as well. So any of those ways you can get ahold of us and we would then respond to you and then report on that at our next meeting. So we do not have anything to report this meeting, but certainly take advantage of it and let us know what's on your mind. And that leads us to the next report, which is Superintendent Webb giving us highlights from around the district. Dr. Webb?
Well, good evening. Our superintendent update for tonight piggybacks on many of the great things that you heard with summer programs. And I'll be giving you some insights from around the district as well and also a taste of what's happening at Central Square. But we have just some wonderful, good things that are happening already as we ramp up for our back-to-school efforts. People like Deb Griffith are already hard at work filling the backpack campaign, getting backpacks for students in need already set for many of our schools around, around the district. We are getting all of our handbooks, our health and safety protocols, all of our transportation information. Even our own school supply lists are all on our website and that's listed right at the bottom. So we're wanting to make sure that we can be as proactive for families that really want to be set for September. We have our fall athletic registration is already open for our fall activities and athletics. We have an incredibly strong activities and athletic program. We have a strong percentage of participants. We're, as a relatively smaller metro school district, we need our kids to be involved. Chuck and his team and Leah and her team do a great job just getting kids engaged, like you just saw with our summer program engagement. We have the same level of passion for all of our activities and athletics. So we want our kids engaged. If you want more information about how to get your child engaged, you can go right to our website and find how to register for activities and athletics. We do need your transportation forms if you haven't got those turned in, especially if you need paid a ride or if you have an alternate address and you need a pickup in a different spot. Please try to get those to us as soon as possible. We continue our great summer meal program. It's for kids of all ages, one to 18 years old. It's still on Tuesdays and Thursdays through August 19th. It's at the South St. Paul Secondary from 11:00 to 1:00 and 3:30 to 5:30. We push that later slot so families that were working could still get there and pick up meals for their kids. So again, if you need any more specifics, our website address is there. You heard a little bit about Packer Prep, but I wanted to give you a little bit more specific information for incoming ninth graders. Not only can you get a running start to the school year and, and our Director of Learning gave all of our building instructional leadership teams a great article on pre-teaching and the value of previewing for kids what's coming their way. This is previewing for kids what that ninth grade experience is going to be. And we actually can provide a .5 credit for incoming ninth graders that want to get a running start at this preview. We have two sessions, August 2nd through the 5th, August 9th through the 12th. It goes from 9:00 to 12:00. So it is a commitment, but if you're concerned about your ninth grader being successful in ninth grade, this is a great run-up to the start of the school year. And you can sign up on the website below. We also have Kindergarten Camp, August 9th through the 12th, for any incoming kindergarteners. This is a big hit for our incoming kindergartner families. It's also following the year of our pandemic when a lot of our preschool families weren't sending children to school statewide. So we want to make sure that our kindergartners get a good run. We have all of our safety protocols in place. So we want to make sure that our kids get a chance to meet teachers, make friends. And again, the website is listed there. Summer Theater, we actually have a board member that's in one of the many starring roles in Joseph and the amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. Monica, do you need to give us your plug into what's your role in this play?
I am a wonderful member of the adult chorus.
How great is that? Could be worth the price of admission right there.
You get to see me dance and sing on stage.
So yeah, we'll probably keep it there. But January, I'm sorry, January, July 29th through August 1st, the show will be running four different dates. The website for tickets is available as well. How about Suni Lee? Just an incredible South St. Paul graduate, hitting the national and world stage now and now competing in the women's all-around, the balance beam and uneven bars. And so great to cheer from, for one of our own. So hats off to Suni, her family and all of our South St. Paul kids. I do also have a few Central Square highlights. We have a lot to celebrate at Central Square. We have new monthly brochures, our monthly newsletters, our brochures. Our website is awesome. Our communications folks have been building that up and making sure that you get the best information there as well. So whether you'd like paper or online, we have it for you. The website is there. And I'm going to give you a few more highlights, just about Central Square. So we just refinished the flooring, fitness room for Central Square. It is brand-new and shiny and top shelf. It's a new fitness wood floor for all It's a new fitness wood floor for all of our fitness classes. One of the unique things that we're seeing is we're seeing as many people participating in online fitness as even in in-person fitness, something that I didn't expect. We have new carpeting rolling in, new paint, new LED lighting, new technology improvements. So lots to celebrate with the facility. We have our high school swim team that already started up with many of their schedules and swim schedules. We have our monthly swim and open for lap swim and adult senior aqua fitness classes. So we have sold, and I'm going to just peek at my notes here, we have 30 passes we sold just for lap swim. So just a reminder for community members and especially for like seniors that want to do lap swimming, it's like a dollar a day. There's no better deal in town if you want to stay fit. And it's open early in the morning. You can get in like at 5:00 in the morning. If you need to swim and get to work, it's there for you here at Central Square. So lots to celebrate. Our senior board meetings have taken off. We have our daily activities. We have coffee, cards, wood carving. We have upcoming socia ls with our barbecue and ice cream social gatherings. We have a trip to the Chan Ass and Together. It's a great place to connect with other seniors in the community. And we're going to continue to also build on our youth programs and our adult programs as well. We're excited about our fall brochure coming out with a lot more in-person fitness classes. Here's some of those numbers I was talking about. We have 37 in-person, we have 34 virtual just for our fitness classes. We have 49 participates, participants in our silver and fit silver sneakers program. So this is just our first month. We're looking to grow this into the future. I do have a quick, about two-minute video for you and I'm going to try to get this rolling here. And it's a quick clip about Insight 7. Do I want to make, do I need to do anything with volume?
So you're going to hit play and then, yeah, over on the right. See the, you can extend the full screen up.
And then also the full screen up, sorry. There it is. And I'm going to just bring it back to the screen if I can. And Mark in the booth, we're counting on you for some volume here. And feel free to start it over if it's only 10 seconds in.
Maybe what might Central Square look like in the future?
As a result of the study, the school district.
We're just going to start at just a few seconds.
Has been operated by the South St. Paul Parks and Recreation Department.
Well, in the last four or five years, we've seen a decline in the fitness center use. And that's kind of what started the conversation approximately about a year ago. So the district and the city entered into a study and did some community outreach and talked to folks about maybe what might Central Square look like in the future.
As a result of the study, the school district's community education department is taking over operations.
As of July 1st, the South St. Paul Community Ed staff will be making their way over here.
The building has always been school district property.
So the district was using the pool for our, some of our Pi Ed classes and then obviously for our boys and girls swim team. Other uses for the building were meeting spaces. So I want to make sure that folks know too, if they're interested in renting any part of the facility, they can contact us at Community Ed and we will be scheduling those as well.
Most of the activities the community has come to expect will still be available.
It, it might be different people sitting at the front desk, but we're here to serve the community just as our Parks and Recs and the city was here to serve the community. That's what we're here for, that's what we do in Community Ed.
The senior center will remain.
One of the things that we had decided between the district and the city were kind of the non-negotiables was to make sure that the senior center stayed as it, as it was. So fair for all will be here. We'll still have a fashion show, we'll still have our holiday gathering. We still have our card clubs, we still have our wood carving group that meets here. And we're looking to expand.
Along with adult basic education.
Part of Community Ed is our South Suburban AVE and that offers classes to anyone 17 and older that wants to pursue obtaining their GED or just brushing up on work skills. And then we also have our ESL, so English Language Learners New to Country. So those classes will be moving from the South St. Paul Education Center with us to Central Square. We look forward to becoming a GED testing center in the fall. So our community and the communities surrounding us would have a place to come. Instead of having to maybe travel to do that, we would have that right here at Central Square.
And staff is planning new programming to bring even more of the community into the building.
From hobbies to exercise classes to cooking classes to how to write a will. So courses and things like that will be offered in the day and then in the evening. You can find any of the current activities for July and August or any information there. Our contact information is all there as well. So folks can go and take a peek at that.
Community Ed staff is ready to help.
It's a good place to support. And so in Community Ed, we believe in lifelong learning from birth until earth is kind of our tagline that we use. And we, we really look forward to being in the heart of it and opening up to the community.
For Insight 7, this is Carmen Haupt.
How great is that?
Love that.
So that, I think, concludes our board update for tonight. And we'll kick it back to you, Chris.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Webb. Moving on to our consent items, we have financial claims and staffing makes up the consent agenda.
Have you gone through a change in your life that has improved your health and wellbeing? We'd love to hear your.
From birth to earth.
That's an ongoing plug for Central Square. Perfect, that's perfect. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. Policy, nothing is coming forward tonight, so we'll move on to the business items. And there is one for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of Gifts Resolution. And Lisa would read that, please?
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background. $400 donation to the varsity softball program from the Croatian Hall. A $600 donation to the secondary theater program from the South St. Paul Lions Club. And a $10,000 donation to the South St. Paul Secondary Activities and Athletics Department from the South St. Paul Lions Club.
Thank you. We're looking for someone to move that resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Very good, any discussion? If not, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Weber?
Aye.
Inspector Lollaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Very good, the resolution passes then. Then we move right on to our informational items with the board members' reports and media updates and anything else that's on their mind. And we'll start to my right with Inspector Aron.
Is it my time now to plug?
Yes.
Okay. Last week I was able to view Central Square and I was just blown away with the progress they've made. They far exceeded any of my expectations. And I want to tell anybody out there who's prone to want to get in better shape or to get more movement in their lives to not only come and look at Central Square, but also bring a friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica?
Well, first off, in terms of the AMSD, they've been having meetings mostly recently about the school, the education bill that passed the legislature and some of its impacts on its different member districts. They're also going to go back to in-person meetings come the fall, but they will maintain a Zoom option because they've discovered that just with travel and people that they can get better attendance if they offer, if they offer both options. Would also like to say congratulations to all the young, young people in our community who participated in the Space Princess Wars production, which was the junior theater players that happened, I believe, last week at the theater. And the kids had just so much fun running around. They had lightsabers and they had just the whole, it was just a fun, fun show. And it's always great to see like seven-year-olds onstage acting is always just a great, a great hoot. And then as Dr. Webb said, this weekend is Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. Tickets are on sale, there is a streaming option. So if you're at the cabin and you always wanted to see the show, you can stream it from there. If that's what you want to do. And just come out and support the local theater.
Very good, thank you. And Linda?
I just wanted to say congratulations to all the kids who've participated in the summer programming, the teachers who dedicated their summer to teaching still, all the staff that made it possible. As I would pull up every day, I did not expect to see hundreds of kids leaving, laughing, staying, talking to each other, talking to the adults. It was such a successful program and I'm sure it was before. Just now with my fresh eyes seeing that kids really wanted to be back in school, wanted to be, wanted to look at their teacher and wanted to talk to their, their friends. So thanks for making that possible.
Thank you. Wendy?
First off, I had the opportunity to attend the South St. Paul Open Foundation banquet dinner held last weekend. On Monday, they had their annual golf tournament in Southview Country Club, which Dr. Webb attended and assisted in, I know, a few of the things there. So I'd like to really thank the Open Foundation as they, they gathered over $40,000 to contribute to South St. Paul schools for activities, athletics and different programs. And a special honoree for this year was Mr. Richard Lick. And I got to talk to him and visit with him. Actually graduated, I knew his daughter, we went to high school together. So it was nice to catch up with, with their family. So a big thank you to the South St. Paul Open Foundation for all that they do and will contribute this year to our, to our students at the secondary and all of our, all of our kids. And I too am looking forward to attending the community play this weekend. Looking forward to that, will be there this weekend. I'm excited. As, as the South St. Paul District Representative to intermediate District 917, we are back meeting in person down at the Rosemont Dakota County Tech School. And just this past week, we had, we welcomed our new superintendent, Dr. Michael Favor. It was his first meeting at 917 with, with the board. And we also had a little retirement gathering for our former superintendent, Mark Zuzik. And we do have two new board members in attendance at 917. So we had a little going-away party for Mr. Zuzik, for Didi Courier from Burnsville and Van de Preznal, the Randolph representative. So looking forward to starting the new year, the new school year with Dr. Favor. And it is, it is, it is a great, great, great bunch of staff down there that we work with too. And I also attended the annual 917 Summer Special Education Seminar, which is held once a year. Attended with, with our special ed directors, Kelly Tetrick and Teresa Starkman. It's very informative and it's a meeting held with all of the districts that are involved with 917. So it's a good chance to, to meet everyone else and discuss a lot of special education activities, events and legal matters. So attended that. And also next week, the Minnesota School Board Association Annual Summer Session will be held. It is being held virtually again this year. I will be attending, watching it obviously at home on my computer. So looking forward to seeing that. It runs for several hours with several different guest speakers, sponsored by the School Board Foundation and the association. So we're looking forward to seeing some, some of those people again because obviously we haven't been able to meet one, close one-on-one. So it is a virtual summer meeting, so looking forward to that next week. And I too just want to put out a personal excitement to Suni Lee, our South St. Paul 2021 graduate. As I watched, watch her on TV, it's so exciting, my heart just, just beats for her. I'm so happy and excited to see her. So congratulations to you, Suni, and, and your family as they did a special private interview with, with her family and her dad. So it was really nice to see. So congratulations and we look forward to watching the Olympics. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. John?
Two quick kudos also for the Space Princess Wars. That was a ton of fun and there, there were so many kids who got to be involved and engaged and they had a ton of energy behind that and really want to acknowledge everyone who made that happen. And then our rising seniors this summer are working on their extended essays and I want to acknowledge Conrad Anderson and the rest of the IB staff who continue to stay engaged with our kids, reminding them that they are working on these papers this summer and all the work that's going into that. So I know emails have been sent and promptly responded to and just appreciate that extra attention during the summer, so.
Excellent, thank you. And Nikki?
Just, I wanted to give a quick thank you to all of the volunteers in South St. Paul who make the whole weekend of Capoja Days happen. Not having it last year, it was, the energy and the excitement was palpable. The children's faces lining the streets were adorable. And a number of people, as the school board float went by, a number of people calling out, "Thank you, thanks for everything you do for our schools." And it, it just lifted our spirits and made us feel more dedicated to doing what we can for the kids and families of South St. Paul. So thank you to everyone who makes that happen. And thank you to the community of South St. Paul for being willing to come out and be together during these days. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. So that ends the informational items. We do have a closed session for tonight to have a negotiations update. So I am looking for a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Very good, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Then the motion passes and the meeting is closed.